Mrs. Stone, it is my pleasure tonight to welcome several students here tonight to represent the high school, middle school, and elementary school. And we have about six organizations that are being recognized tonight. And I want to start off with Mr. Dennison, if you can come forward. And we do have a couple groups to start with.
Thank you.
First is the Best Awards, and then also a secondary group, or the next group, by improved academic efforts and behavior. Is this your good enough here?
Yes.
It's wonderful to see all of you this evening. It's, I want to congratulate those people who are receiving certificates tonight. They're well deserved. For the Best Awards, and I'm not sure if I've seen both of them, but I know Brandon's here. Little information about the Best Awards. This award is given to students exhibiting outstanding levels of effort, responsibility, and citizenship. These are not academic awards or athletic awards, okay? They are awards designed to recognize students who exhibit outstanding work ethic by continually doing their best, putting forth best effort, committing to the responsibilities that they undertake. You know, we give, we give students, and you know, at home, you give your children a duty to do, you expect them to follow through with it. These two recipients, this evening, we've asked them to do certain things throughout the year, and you can count on it, it's going to get done. That's one of the things we're looking for. Doing what they say they're going to do and being reliable and trustworthy. These two will also be recognized on Wednesday, May 1st, at an award ceremony that I believe Mr. Kimmel and I are going to attend over Pioneer. The first person I'd like to come up here and recognize is Brandon Keener.
Brandon's staff here.
And I'm not sure, is Rebecca Hargreaves here? There she is.
How this works is, and you guys will all go through this routine here in Sunday, we ask that you go around, shake everybody's hands, please stick around. When all the accommodations are handed out, as a group, you'll come out to the main front of the building where you came in, and we'll get a group picture with each of the, each of the groups that are recognized, to make sure that we're able to publicize your accomplishments on the website and through the news media. So, you want to come around and everybody, shake everybody's hands.
This next group, and no disrespect towards any of the people that are receiving awards tonight, this next group is a group that really touches my heart this year. And I've seen growth from last year, and from the previous year, and to save face with many of you, I try to get with all of you, and I try to have a good time at school, but I'm telling you, these people have grown so much over the last year and a half. Mr. Henderson and I, we talked about it, Mr. Burke, Mr. Messera, Mr. Supon. I don't know if you know my duties at this school, but much of my duties has to deal with discipline. And I have to say, sometimes I'm not the most favorite person in the building. I have to say, these people I'm going to recognize tonight have just made unbelievable strides in behavior, in their academics. And those two, connected together, there's a correlation between behavior and grades. I can pull up each one of these students, which I did, their grades have went up immensely because their behavior has improved. And that is a testament to mom and dad. Mom, whoever it is, your guardians, parents, you're doing the right thing, okay? I've heard this said before, you've got to write them like a dirt bike at home sometimes. You know, you just have to stay on them. We are here to help you, okay? We're here to change their behaviors, we want them to, we want to have them excel academically. And if, they can't excel academically if their behaviors don't get better. The FBA bar, unbelievable to shit, okay? What a turnaround, what a turnaround. I know, I don't know if I've seen all of you here, but I'm going to at least say their names. Kylene Cooley, not here. Kylan made an unbelievable turnaround from last year. Bria Cox, haven't seen her. Michelle Ford, come up here. Listen, she's, I won't tell any stories on her, but unbelievable turnaround, her grades are unbelievable. I don't know if Tony Hernandez is here? Okay. Raven Phillips. Fantasia Taylor. Mercedes, I have to, I got the whole story about you. Mr., you said it, I didn't. Mercedes, turn this way again. Mercedes and I, go back a couple years ago, we were standing in the, back little theater, and Mr. Supon and I were all over you, weren't we? I mean, we just, it was just unbelievable. We just couldn't break this gal. And it was just, what a wonderful turnaround. Her grades are unbelievable, correct? I'm a long way, so, there you go. And then Braxton's here, why don't you come on up here? Braxton's grades have improved immensely, he's turned into a leader in the building, we're very proud of him. One other thing before I let them shake their hands, we talk about climate in the building, and trying to get things turned around, and, and get our building heading in the right direction. It's not necessarily with, it's not necessarily with that top 10% of the kids. These are the kids that we're talking about, that middle portion, that we need a lot of support, and it's you parents that make the difference, okay? Don't ever stop believing that, okay? And if we can help you at that secondary level, we welcome you in the building, so. Oh, and Gabby, why don't you come up here? Come up, I almost forgot you. This gal here, let me say this, she is now a Pioneer student, correct? And last year, Gabby Abar and I, we spent a lot of time together, didn't we? And not because I don't, I don't want her in my office, I just don't get to see her because she's doing so well over at Pioneer. It's just, it's unbelievable, almost choked me up a little bit, so, keep the good work up. Now, I will say, they're not complete angels, and they never will be, okay? Nor we, we always make mistakes, but they are headed in the right direction, and they need to be recognized for that, so that's why I'm here this evening.
the elementary and the middle school program here. So we'll start with Mr. Roll, presenting the elementary Future Chef.
Thank you. I'm seeing it for Mr. Dennison, our food service director, and very pleased to recognize the following students from the elementary school. If you haven't had the opportunity to be a participant, or a person to watch the Future Chef, I'll invite you to do that next year, both at the elementary and the secondary level, because these kids really do a nice job. And I can personally say that I tasted every one of their dishes, and they all did a first rate job. So, this evening, we'd like to welcome the finalists up here today and recognize them. And at this time, I'd like to have Carson Kimmel come up, please. Lincoln Mollinkoff. Did I see Lincoln? Did not see Lincoln, okay? Samuel Rager. And Matthew Foltz. And Steve Competition, the judges said they had a hard time looking and figuring out which was which, but Matthew was the person who was selected as the winner. But we feel that they're all winners in our book.
I'm Mr. Henderson, the principal of the secondary building, and I too have the privilege of observing and participating in the middle school Future Chef competition. It's my privilege to recognize our finalists from the, from here from the middle school who are here this evening, and I would ask if they would please join me up here. Of course, is sixth grader Sarah Lipscomb. Sixth grader Emily Chivaches. And is, and our winner, Earl, Earl Jefferson here tonight? Okay. Again, if you have an opportunity to have either one of these young ladies, or Earl, who won the competition, cater a meal for you, or do a party, I highly encourage it, they made an outstanding salad. My stomach told me that all three of them were winners. Earl Jefferson was actually the winner for the evening, and again, to echo what Mr. Roll said, if you have an opportunity to participate in that, or observe it, it's an outstanding competition, and congratulations to these young ladies and Earl. I'm going to welcome Mr. Dennison back up to the front here, and we have Rotary Four-Way Speech Contest.
Like Mr. Kimmel said, it's a test that was sponsored by Rotary. I gotta say, I wasn't there while you delivered the speech, and correct me if I'm wrong, your speech had to be between, your criteria between five and seven minutes long, and you had to use minimal note cards. The Rotary Four-Way Test determines how Rotarians live their life. They evaluate their actions by four questions. One, is it the truth? Two, is it fair to all concerned? And then three, will it build goodwill and go to friendships? And then four, will it be beneficial to all concerned? And this year's four-way Rotary Speech Contest winner, and she got a local award, I think around $300, which is pretty nice. And then she went on to a district competition, and she did fairly well there too. But winner of this year's Rotary Four-Way Speech Contest was Emily Hobel.
Next group of students we'd like to recognize is recent spelling bee award winners in our district, and I believe that Mrs. Stanfield can be honored as our spelling bee recipients, and then also a tri-county, tri-county spelling bee recipient. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Stanfield.
Thank you. I'm Donna Stanfield, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment here at Bisciris City Schools. And I would like to tell you a little bit about our spelling bee, which happened, it is a Bisciris City Spelling Bee, and it incorporates grades four through eight for Bisciris Elementary, Bisciris Secondary, and Holy Trinity School, so all three participated. This was held on March 11th, we had 25 students, and it was coordinated by our gifted supervisor, Leela Gisegi. So I'm going to give her kudos. I also want to take this time to recognize First Federal Community Bank, they donated all the cash prizes that first, second, and third place winners received this year. So I wanted to make sure they were honored. I first like to begin with our top three winners, so if these three would come up, coming in third place at our Bisciris Spelling Bee, and then also being able to advance to a tri-county spelling bee at Mid-Ohio ESC, is Hannah Weifman. Coming in second place was Bryce Stewart. And the top spelling bee winner was Emily McAdams. Also, I'd also like to take the time, these three won at the Bisciris Spelling Bee, and as I said, they were able to advance to the tri-county spelling bee at Mid-Ohio. However, the top seven winners got to advance to the tri-county spelling bees. So coming in, filling up those final seven spots were Logan Carmen, is Logan here? Kayan Hughes. Jayden Maddow. Parents, I want you to disable the spell checker because they don't need it.
Next, Burke we'd like to recognize, or soon we'd like to recognize, Mr. Burke, I'm going to turn the floor over to him.
My name is Mark Burke, I'm the Director of Student Services here at Bisciris. And as one of my duties, I oversee our preschool program. And last month, I was able to bring, I believe it was close to 22, I think it was 22, 23 students here, last month, and recognize them for being reading buddies. We have second graders and third graders that come down to our preschool program and read to our preschool kids, and our kids really enjoy it. They really get excited when those big kids come down from the second floor and come into the classroom. And Natalie, why don't you come on up? Natalie Stover unfortunately couldn't be here. Natalie couldn't be with us last month because she was actually at the chef's competition, and you've already seen her once today, so she gets two accommodations, and she was one of our preschool readers, and we want to thank her for that and all the hard work that she did. So thank you again.
We're very fortunate, our community has a number of organizations and businesses that support our, support our school district. The next person we'd like to recognize tonight is Mike Macbeth with the Bisciris Elks Lodge 156. And I believe that we have a, not only a combination for you, but there's also a donation on behalf of the Elks Lodge, so you'd like to come up and-
Sure.
-tell the folks here a little bit about what the presentation tonight is for.
Sure. Each year, the Elks National Foundation asks its member lodges to do fundraising based on its membership for the Elks National Foundation. That in turn makes us eligible for grants for various community organizations. So tonight, I'm here to present a check for $1,000 to the Bisciris City School District for the Backpack Program.
And so on behalf of Bisciris City School District, we'd like to present this accommodation for our continued partnership. This is not the first thing that the Alex has had generous donation to our school district. It seems like every time we turn around, we're either getting new hurdles for the track, or we're getting donations for a special program in our school district. And as you know, the Bisciris Backpack Program goes to support over 140 students and their families to provide food for the weekends. So this $1,000 donation will be put to good use, and so, thank you very much.
I tell each of our parents and students that count, and to each of our board meetings now that in January, our president, Sandy Stone, had stated, or giving a directive, that she wanted students attending our board meetings. And I said, enough said. And each of our assistant principals was given a month in charge of each board meeting, they were in charge of recognizing some students from their, from their area of responsibility. And this month was Mr. Dennison, as you see, he had recognized several groups, we had other groups that we were recognizing tonight also. Mr. Cook and I had a presentation last week, a business presentation, and it's a lot of questions and answers that are asked of our district. And this person's in Chicago and doesn't know anything about Bisciris State Schools, but these know a lot about it because we were going out to have our district rated, financially rated, because we were reselling our bonds to get a better rate to save this community some taxpayer money. One of the questions that came up from the person who was doing the investigating, or I call it investigation-
That's what I was-
Do you have people attend your board meetings? And I said, absolutely. And it was posed as a negative question, I do it as a positive question, because the point is, is that what they want to know if there was a lot of controversy within your school district. And I said, you have it totally wrong, we have a room full of board, at board meetings, but it's because they're receiving positive accommodations for things they didn't do in the school district. And for that, I applaud you for being supportive of our school district. There's great things going on in your schools, and we don't get enough of this type of things out there. So help spread the word, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Students, get home, get some rest tonight, and you're free to go. Unless you want to stick around for the rest of the board meeting, but we're welcome to do that, so. I just remind this as we come out, the crowd is right here, so we'll get a picture for everybody. Thank you for coming.
There's no shame in being a worker, that's okay.
I don't know if that will be on the floor.
Count them down, huh? I like that shirt. I've seen you wear that before. It's a pirate monkey.
Sorry, Mr. Burke, that was blocked, that was small for the crowd.
Oh, that's true. No, I thought you'd come in though. How are we doing?
We want to blast it into the information.
That's interesting.
I'm a bad, you keep baseball, you keep no hit. Oh, oh, good.
I feel like I'm like-
Go on down to approval of the minutes, we have a motion to approve our March 20th, 2013, regular meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sheenker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. And we have a motion to approve the treasurer's financial report dated March 31st, 2013.
So, Mr. Ford?
Any comments tonight?
Yeah, I have a couple things, a few minutes here, I'll be, last couple days I've been down in Columbus at the Lasbo Conference, I'm going to be down tomorrow for the final day. Governor's Office is going to be there along with the state auditor. Give us some updates on House Bill 59, pending budget legislation. Along with that, we're going to have four state reps and four state senators, so should be some interesting conversation, a hot topic today as well. Tying in with that, Mr. Kimmel mentioned our conference call, we had the opportunity to meet with Kent Cashill today down in Columbus, kind of discuss where we're at in the process. Had some preliminary numbers on Monday, wasn't enthralled with those, basically asked him to go back to the drawing board, spend some time with him and his best in New York today, reworking, restructuring, taking all the different options. Final numbers are going to be subject to the daily market fluctuations, but savings should come in right around $600,000. And when we left today down in Columbus, we were going to knock two years off of the head in this. So originally we discussed one, but it looks like we're able to get two, hopefully at this point, hold the price. Going out next week to the law markets price that hopefully close, I'm going to guess sometime around Wednesday, as soon as that happens, we'll let you guys know. Big news out of the process was the result of this conference call, was an extreme amount of work on both of our ends to prepare for, I guess, battle of the movies. Kent was concerned that, given the economic conditions, the overall climate in the area of the state, that the credit could be low.
Yeah. We're only asking for half of that.
Yeah, yeah. I won't tell you how we spent on that 90-minute conversation. It's all baked in. Maintain our credit rating, which was quite exceptional. So we held the line at 80, which is phenomenal, given the fact that Kent and most of the investment bankers in New York were quite concerned with that, some detrimental effects in that regard. So everything's shaping up to be solid. Looks pretty phenomenal at this point, I'm excited about it. Don't want to get too excited because the market, you never know what's going to happen between now and when the price next to it, but solid savings there. Couple of notes, solar panels that we had discussed, that's progressing. I got an email from Jared Corbin. He has spoke with Jake Grau, and they are doing an engineering study now, they're working with our architects, to kind of make sure the load in the ceilings can hold what we're looking to do on the rooftops, make sure there's no issues there with some of the membranes on the roof, et cetera. So they're kind of in that investigation, homework phase. And I think once we get through that phase, we proceed, we know we're going to go forward with this, I'd like to bring him in to meet with the board. We'll start taking a look at contracts at that point, and I think we'll obviously bounce that off our people accounts, just to make sure everything's kosher at that point, we're comfortable with the process. Also mentioned, this is a big item, I know when I started up here, Kevin and I had a lot of discussions on automating our district work for paper forms. We're swimming in paper. Seems like there ought to be a better way for all of the buildings to get us their leave forms approved. Had some conversations with Treka regarding HR kiosks. They don't presently offer that, another ITC does. They were willing to give us access to that, they were hesitant for some political concerns, but Mr. Carter spoke with Mr. Kimmel, and they were willing to flip the bill for form share, which is a third-party company that will provide us with the opportunity to automate requisitions for approval, all of our personal sick leave vacation leave forms at no cost to us. Spent some time with them today. I'm going to say that cost, if we went out on our own, would be anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 to do this. So it was pretty nice of Treka to put that at no cost to us. Mr. Kimmel spent a lot of time on the phone with Mr. Carter, and we were able to haggle that pricing out, so that worked out quite well. On the medical insurance front, this is obviously a huge topic of discussion amongst the employees and for budgetary concerns. In the process, I've got a health insurance committee meeting set up for May 2nd. Looks like we're going to try to move back to Medical Mutual where we were previously. They were able to come back in after some discussions, negotiations, analyzing claims, lawyers' claims. Looks like we're going to obtain a 0% increase, worst case at this point for next year. So that's very positive news in that regard. Cigna came back very competitive. It was actually going to be an increase, a slight one. Impact to the board was probably around $70,000, which isn't necessarily a chunk change, but medical insurance terms, it's relatively small. 0% seems more attractive to me. We have had some issues with Cigna, the network coverage. I don't think the employees have been totally satisfied with that move. So I think this is a good way to make them happy and also alleviate some of that pressure on the budget as well. Questions? We'll keep you updated as we go to market, hopefully next week.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Mur?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. We have a motion to approve the addendum to the agenda. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Mur?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes. We have a motion to approve the addendum to the agenda. Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sheever?
Yes.
Mr. Mur?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Put the addendum in the correct spot. Any reports? Mr. Stone?
In reaction to House Bill 59, or yeah, House Bill 59 that's proposed by the case of the administration, the House has come back with amended substitute House Bill. Currently, actually yesterday, the OSBA, FASA, and OASCO testified about the school funding proposed before the Senate Financial Education Subcommittee. They, along with a gentleman by the name of Dr. Howard Clear of the Education Tax Policy Institute, presented testimony about the difference between the initial proposals from Governor Kasich and the amended substitute bill. Basically, these organizations are supporting a formula that establishes a basic per pupil amount necessary for an adequate education, and that is equitably distributed. They're taking great issue with the expansion of voucher programs that was proposed by the governor. Admittedly, haven't had a chance to really spend much time with their testimony per se, but that seems to be kind of the highlights at this point. I don't foresee House Bill 59 being worked out any time soon. I think it's going to be something that's ongoing, and there's going to be tons of testimony of the practical effects of. Avoid the proposal is, I think, going to be an overhaul in the way we see education funding, so regardless, that is my opinion.
Thank you. What thoughts, Mr. Sheever?
Well, tonight's athletic report is being postponed due to weather.
Okay. I like it.
I mean, I feel for Mr. Jeffrey and the students and their parents. I mean, it seems like April's going to be just a bomb or a month. And can't wait for May to get here with all the postponements and makeups and such as spring weather. But one thing, athletic counseling, we had last month, one topic that I'd like to talk on just a little bit this evening is, which ties into our athletic department's continuous improvement plan, it's our weight room piece, and I know that's been a topic of conversation for quite a while. And I think that the good news is, is it looks like there's some light at the end of the tunnel with this, and I want to thank Mr. Burke and his committee with working on a wellness nutrition grant. And apparently, it looks like very favorable that that may come through for April. And if so, we'll be able to actually put in a weight room coordinator, and we'll be part of that with Flex Fitness, so that'll be something we might bring to the board here in the next few months, and hopefully tie that all down, which will be a very good thing for us.
Mr. Sheever, isn't the gentleman who is in charge of the Flex Fitness kind of sort of the, he's a graduate, isn't he?
Bryce.
Bryce Bong.
Yeah. It'd be really great to see him come back with the school. And other than what you've been reading in the paper about the N10 now becoming the N9.
Yep.
I guess, looking at that face value, with two schools that are going to be talked to as far as going forward, I know that both the schools are very much, Elgin and Upper Sandusky. I compliment Upper Sandusky for wanting to get back into, I mean, the group of schools that some didn't want. So I applaud them for, and I, if the move is made, I was this coordinator, I would like to see Upper Sandusky coming to the N10, if that is possible, be a good fit for us and the N10. Thank you for the wonderful work.
Please go. I have Pioneer this evening. At this time, Pioneer's enrollment is 640 new students for next year. That is up 100 students from last year at the same time, so they're very excited about their enrollment right now. And the only other thing I want to remind everybody of is the week of May 6th through May 10th is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I'm hoping that, I know in the past, we have done, maybe like sent cookies, we have Lori bake trays of cookies and stuff, and sent them to the teachers one day that week. And I'm hoping maybe we could do something like that, possibly.
Will you be taking care?
Thanks. And that's the end of my report. And we have Mr. Mur of Wellness, after we talk about cookies. Oh my gosh, Dr. Johnson, see, I can't even follow.
You do, you have to raise your hand.
I can't even, I can't go following on the sheet.
You can barely see her reach, she's so old.
Wow, wow. First one's always the favorite. What are you talking about? First one's always the favorite.
I'm sorry, Paul, I really am. Yes.
I have nothing specific to report. I assume that all the state assessments are concluded or concluding? Concluding is the right word?
Next Tuesday, we do grade science. One thing I can share is on Tuesday for our third through fifth grade reading, we had seven absent students. Today, we had two absent students for math. An incentive to increase in attendance is in place. And today, as mentioned to the gentleman, when I checked our attendance, we had 24 kids out of 777 who were absent today. So we're pleased with their attendance and their effort so far.
True. And? No, so far. Test.
Good, that's a good.
We had none for OT2, and that's the first of the year.
That's all right. The only other thing I'll say is, looking forward, I can never remember such a challenging time in education with all the changes that are coming down in terms of student growth measures and part assessments and Common Core and all that stuff. I assume we're gearing up to take care of all those issues in some fashion or another, but it's going to be a challenging time.
May 22nd, I know it's very end of year, but our fourth graders, every one of them will be taking one of those new online assessments. And Mr. Dan and I are working on, we have an email all set to go, release to every teacher in the district, where they can go on and take a practice test, so they can see it. And they can actually, all teachers could take a student in their elementary into a lab and let them. But yes, we're trying to do as much as we can to gear up to those things with not only the instruction in the classroom, but letting them see what these new assessments is, they're very different, with split screens and you're having to scroll.